Brilliant, thank you. Okay, so welcome one and all, councillors and members of the public. Thank you for joining us for this extraordinary meeting on February 24th, 2021. For those of you that don't know me, and I'm sure most of you really do, those at home, my name is councillor Anne-Marie Nixey. And I have the very privilege, but unfortunately very sad position of just becoming the new Chair of Ramsgate Town Council. And as again, most of you will know, that is unfortunate because our dear friend and colleague councillor Peter Campbell passed away last week. So I'm sure you'll understand and join me if we start off the meeting with a minute's silence to remember him. So I have my time at the ready and I shall time this for a minute. Thank you very much. Thank you. A very great man, a very great friend, and I know he'll be dearly missed. Thoughts with you, Peter? Anyway, so we start with the meeting then. So agenda item one is apologies. So Eileen, do you have any apologies at all, please?
I don't know. The crap is noise coming from somewhere.
I'll take that. No, is Eileen or Richard or Dean, do we have any apologies at all?
I haven't received any apologies.
Okay.
I haven't received any.
Okay. Item two is declarations of interest. And as we're all aware, that's me in this instance. I declare an interest in this particular item. So without further ado, I won't be able to chair this part of the meeting. And I'm going to open up the meeting to nominate a new chair for this particular part. Thank you. Do I have any suggestions? Councillor Hetherington?
I'd like to nominate David Green.
Do we have a seconded for that, please?
I will second it.
And Roshan Ara, thank you councillor Ara, seconded. Can it say now who are against that? No? Okay, thank you. So councillor Green, I hope you're up for this. Thank you very much. I'll put myself on mute and councillor Green will carry on with the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne-Marie. And thank you, colleagues. There's only one item on the agenda of this meeting, and that's in two parts. The first part is to rescind the decision that was taken at a previous meeting on the possible purchase of an allotment. And then assuming that passes, if it doesn't pass, then we close the meeting. If it does pass, then we need then to go on to decide what to do. So I'm going to hand you to Richard to deal with the first part of the meeting.
Thank you, Chairman. What we will need is a, what we will need is a, not a motion, but a, we will need, we will need a resolution to the effect that you're prepared to operate standing order 18.1, which allows the council to rescind a decision that's already been made. I have given the council some details of evidence of why that decision should be overturned. At the, at the meeting of the Finance and General Purposes Committee in January, the meeting was really resolved around the valuation of, of the land. We had asked a professional set of valuers to value the land for us, and they came up with a certain figure, which was less than the figure that had been agreed in principle with the vendor. And since that time, new information has come to hand, which was that, A, there were, that the, the valuer knew of two, two sales of land in the last five years. One was nearby, and that was the land that was sold for a total of £450,000. And it also had, it was sold at £15,000 per acre, which is what the valuation we thought was about to be done. And then there was a second value, a second land transaction, which was some distance away, and involved some marshland, which was difficult to access by a third party, and was in fact divided up between two existing landowners. And that only fetched £10,000. What we got was a valuation based on the latter rather than the former. And this gave a kind of like a skewed version of the valuation. Had they even just took a mean of the two valuations, you probably would have come up with a valuation of 12,500. Had that been done, then you would have been talking about something like £175,000 instead of £145,000. In which case, the difference between that and the original, with the original estimate of around the £213,000 was, would have been not quite so much. On top of that, the vendor of the land is, has actually come back to us and said he is prepared to let the land go for somewhat less than the original valuation of value, sorry, the original offer that he'd made, the £213,000, to actually bring it down to £190,000. So if we take the midway thing of, say, £175,000, which is a median between the two figures, we come and, and £190,000, we have a difference of about 12,500, which really is, well, bearing in mind, we're talking about a large, quite a large field, is relatively a small sum of money. Really, it really comes down to the fact where the council feels that the original valuation should stand, or it shouldn't, and how important that valuation is to the town. And it's also whether you, how much you feel that that land is worth. It comes down to, another thing it comes down to is what is our duty as a council? One of the sole duties we have, statutory duties we have as a parish or stroke town council, is that we are a allotment.
Richard, can I stop you there? Because first of all, having had this change of valuation, which is the reason why four councillors wrote to you.
Yes.
Saying that the decision should be rescinded.
Yes.
I think we should stick to that in the first instance. It seems to me that this council should take decisions on the correct facts rather than incorrect facts.
Sure.
So having explained why the difference has occurred, I think I should ask if any councillors want to comment on just whether we should rescind the previous decision.
That's fine.
Can I make a point of order, please, Mr. Chairman? It's councillor Piper.
Yes, you can.
I was rather hoping, our town clerk has gone rather eloquently to describe more of the detail of this matter. We haven't yet had a correct legal reason why this meeting is even taking place in the first place. The town council, so my point of order is one of procedure. The town clerk commented in paragraph 18.1, rescission of a previous resolution. And for members of the public who don't know what that says, it says, "A decision, whether affirmative or negative, of the council shall not be reversed within six months, except either by a special resolution, the written notice whereof bears the names of at least four members of the council, or by a resolution moved in pursuit of a report or recommendation of a committee. When a special resolution or any other resolution moved under this provision has been disposed of, no single resolution may be moved within a further six months." The key in that sentence coming, Mr. Chairman, is that it's a decision of the council previously taken by the council. The council has not discussed this matter yet at all. It was discussed on the 27th of February at the Finance and General Purposes Committee meeting. And our consideration, I read from the agenda for that meeting, members were asked to consider the report and to make a final decision on the project, or make the recommendation to council. Finance and General Purposes Committee made a final decision not to proceed, and therefore they did not make any recommendation to the council. And as can be seen on the minutes of the 3rd of February council meeting, it does not appear. So it doesn't seem to me the correct procedure to use 18.1 to rescind a former council decision when the matter has not been before council. I have written to the town clerk on this matter, but he does not agree with me. He, his comment to me was that Finance and General Purposes Committee is in effect the council. Well, Mr. Chairman, as you know, you're an experienced councillor, it is not. No committee of the council is allowed to include all members of the council. So it has to be separate. So my suggestion to the town clerk was that if this matter was to be revisited, it should properly be revisited via the Finance and General Purposes Committee. And I genuinely do not believe this meeting is the right place because it's not been called under the correct procedure. So I respectfully urge, Mr. Chairman, that if the town clerk would like to give some legal guidance on that, and I would like it recorded in writing, that we in fact dispense with the meeting and do not discuss the subject matter. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, right.
Town, town clerk, could you?
Yes, right. Point number one, council overrules anything that any committee must do. The council is superior, is the superior body at all times. When it talks about the council, it means councils, committees, anything, the council as it means. The F and GP committee had delegated powers, which the council gave to it. It acted on behalf of the council. If, for instance, the F and GP committee had said, "I don't think we have the powers to do this," to override a decision, a decision in principle which the council had made, then both, both of these things fall in the sense that if the F and GP committee didn't have those powers, then the original decision, which was the council agreed in principle, all we have to do tonight then is to say, "Okay, we agree in principle, we've agreed in principle, we now affirm that principle," or "We don't affirm that principle," because your now meeting is the council. So you can either have it that way, or you can use 18.1 to rescind a decision made on the behalf of the council by the F and GP committee under its delegated powers. There are two ways to look at it now. Either way, the F and GP committee shouldn't have it come back again, because all that's going to do is just create more delay. So I would say the, the council has the power to do it. If you're saying, if councillor, if you're prepared to accept what councillor, councillor Piper said, then, then all we have to do is to say, "Well, the decision of the F and GP committee was not binding on the council because it didn't have the powers." I disagree with that, but if that's what you feel, then you can then say, "Well, then then we're back to where we were when the council itself gave its approval in principle." And you either then come back to say, "Right, well, that's okay then." And if that's easier, if that's easier, we don't have to bother with 18.1, do that. You've got two choices here. I would recommend that you stick with 18.1. But if you don't feel that's, if you don't want to do that, and you feel that the council's original decision should be upheld, and the F and GP committee has no powers or the right to do what they did, they should have given it resolve to recommend, then so on and so forth.
If I could express an opinion from the Chair, I think councillor Piper is technically correct. But the effect of that is that this council has never made a decision about the allotment as the council.
Correct.
In which case, we don't need to rescind any decision.
No.
We can just, having the item on the agenda being duly advertised, we can now proceed to make the decision tonight of the council.
Mr. Chairman, with respect, councillor Piper, then, I don't think you can do that because this meeting was called to consider the reasons given, i.e. 18.1. 18.1 does not apply, and Mr. Styles knows very well it does not apply. He's waffling to get round the standing orders, and it's not good practice for this council to bend standing orders to suit. The council is, the Finance and General Purposes Committee is not the council. It is a subcommittee of the council. And I remember this because Mr. Styles gave us a lengthy lecture six years ago, when the council was formed, to explain the legal difference between the two. So this council cannot rescind a decision made by the Finance and General Purposes Committee. They are two separate bodies. So to, having a few days to think about it.
Councillor Piper, I think I just said we do not need to rescind that decision because it wasn't a decision of the council. I think we're agreed there.
In which case, this, an extraordinary meeting of this council needs to be properly called with a proper agenda, the proper due notice given, and tonight is not it. Because we were brought into this meeting, if you like, under false pretenses.
I'll take advice from the clerk, but I believe it was properly called. The, the allotment was on the agenda, and therefore we can proceed to make a decision. But I see no point in delaying a week.
I would like my objection formally noted in writing, please, Chairman, because I will follow this through. This is a blatant disregard of council procedure.
Your objection is properly recorded.
Now, I support councillor Piper on that.
But I, but I would like a vote of the council whether to proceed or whether to adjourn for a week and then reconvene. So, does anybody else wish to speak?
I would like to speak, councillor Linda Piper, please. I don't think this meeting should go ahead. The Finance and General Purposes meeting did not support this financial outlay at all, and I think it should stand as thus. If we carry on with this meeting and it isn't done in the correct manner, that ordinary, everyday people in Ramsgate can recognize that what has been done, that has been correct, we will come under all manner of trouble and, not so much prosecutions, but yes, we will be criticized. And we're trying to do our best for the people of Ramsgate. And it was decided at the Finance and General Purposes meeting that this was not a financial good thing for the people of Ramsgate. It would only affect a small number of our residents, and it is not a good thing to do for the people of Ramsgate. So like councillor Stuart Piper, I would like my objections noted, please. Thank you.
Stuart, Barbara.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. It's, it's difficult, but I have to say, you've agreed that councillor Piper is technically right, so he's following, if that's, if that's correct. And I can see no difficulty for me in, in this being postponed for one more week. What's one more week going to make to ensure that, that the meeting is absolutely right and correct? I, I, I don't know the stuff about the standing orders of this council, but all I want to do is to ensure that, that those standing orders are absolutely right, and that, and that the meeting that we have to discuss this matter, because this council is split on it, and, and I think that we need to ensure that, that we're absolutely right in, that the meeting is held for, in the right due, due process. So I have to say, I would be happy for this to be finished now and for another meeting to, to be called. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Jane Hetherington?
Hi, yeah, I mean, I'm a little confused by councillor Piper, Richard, and just exactly what's going on here about the standing order issue. And I think we're supposed to be fairly at sea with this. However, we are in a very different position, as councillor Linda Piper said about the previous meeting. We are in a very different position from there, in the fact, a number of people that weren't at that meeting were at this one. But aside that point, we also have been offered this land at a very different price. We have a legal duty to supply allotments to our constituents. And at the moment, I think it's 80, the figure is 80 people are waiting, or this, and we can provide over 200, no, it's not actually, it's.
Oh, that's not relevant.
No. Well, it is quite relevant, actually. We normally have 80 on the waiting list, and we've now got 245, and I think that is quite relevant. So I would just like to state that.
Councillor Barbara, Barbara Young? Thank you, I'm muted.
You're muted, Barbara.
I'll move on. I've got somebody that I can only see as C with their hand up. And I'm not sure who that is. Barbara, could you unmute yourself?
Can Dean unmute, Barbara?
Unfortunately, I don't have that facility, councillors.
Oh, sorry, Dean.
Okay.
Oh, she's off.
Okay, Barbara, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Oh, good. I'm wondering if the interim, we could find out roughly how much it would cost to set up the allotment, i.e. fences, et cetera. So we have an overall picture of cost that might help the others to make a decision.
I think we know that, Barbara. I think it's £120,000.
Right, okay.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Yes, please, Chair. It's councillor Wing. I mean, I certainly felt at the last meeting that there wasn't enough, I abstained because I felt there wasn't enough, I felt the issue was being rushed, I didn't think people were given enough time to, to speak, I didn't think there were enough people there. So I certainly feel that this issue needs to be debated, and we need to think of a wider vision for that plot of land if we, if we did in future make the decision to buy it, not just about allotments, because it would give us as a town, not just allotments, but a great deal of many other things that can be done. But I also agree with, with Stuart Piper that this is an incredibly amount, a large amount of money to spend, and we need to make sure that whatever we do and whatever decision we make is squeaky clean, as squeaky clean as it possibly can be. And I don't think there was any harm in waiting a week to redo this meeting next week to make sure we're spot on.
Does anybody else wish to speak? No?
Could I speak, please?
You're being incredibly noisy, whoever you are. I can't work out who you are. Sorry.
Councillor Moore, and I'm down as a guest.
Okay, okay, councillor Moore.
What I would like, Chairman, is what is the total figure of setting up the allotments? Not just the cost of the land, of everything?
To set up, once we've got the land?
Yes, what is the cost?
The town clerk, the town clerk has estimates of £120,000 to set it up.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, councillor Piper again. On the paperwork we've been sent by the town clerk, he's asking for a budget of £400,000. But with respect, that is the meat of the discussion. It's not, it's not the decision you are asking us to make, but just for people's edification, if you like, the town clerk has sent us all the details, and it's £400,000.
That's, that's the cost of the land, and the cost to set it up is round about £400,000, according to the town clerk. Right, if nobody else wishes to speak?
I have a hangover. There are a number of things going through here, and I think they need some clarification. I'm still not sure whether you're saying to me, I'm not sure whether the meeting is saying that the decision they made, I mean, you've got one councillor on one side saying, "The decision made by the F and GP committee should be upheld and there shouldn't be changed." And they were, they were given the power. Yet, right next to her is another councillor saying, "Well, they haven't got the powers to do it, and they're not acting as the council," and refers to 18.1 when it says "council." When it says "council," it means the council wherever it has its powers. Now, if you've delegated those powers to the F and GP committee to make that decision, which we do, then because we work on delegated powers for most of our committees, and to spend budgets, then that's the decision that was made. If, if, I think really what we're going to say, if you're going to have a meeting next week, I don't want somebody to then pop up and say, "But the F and GP committee had made that decision, you can't make it." You've got to decide now that if you, if you defer this meeting for a further week, and, and find out if that's what you want to do, then that's the final end, end story here, and we don't keep going backwards and forwards and referring back to a decision made by the F and GP committee. We, I can redo another agenda and, and, and the sole thing won't be the decision, won't be 18.1, it will be simply a decision, "Does the town, does the council uphold its previous decision in November, late November, when it decided in principle to purchase the land?" That's all the only, that's a simple decision. If everybody is agreed to do that, then there is no need for anything else. And that's, that's, if that's what you want to do, and I think that's what we need to decide here and now. And I think I'd like a proposal and a second for something on that front. And that will then be, that will be in clarity to the whole thing, if that's really what you want to do.
Chair, can I speak? It's councillor Rocheski.
Yes, go ahead.
Chair, thank you. I'm all in favour of having more allotments. I think it's important, it's good for people's mental health, et cetera. But I do think we've gone the wrong way about this moment. I'm inclined to agree with councillor Reverend Stuart Piper, that we must refer this back possibly to F and GP, and then come back to full council. I'd like to see it go back to F and GP, and then I'd like to see it go to full council and get a decision through, a decision that everyone is happy with. I know that all councillors cannot attend one meeting of a committee, but they can all attend a council meeting. Um, therefore, I I I'm inclined to uh be in favour of closing this meeting and proposing that we go forward with a new either F and PG meeting or full council meeting uh in at least a week's time. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Uh yes, councillor Wing, I think that's a very good idea. I mean, it seems to me, I, you know, I played sports, so rules, these rules seem very confusing to me, but I am a fairly new councillor. It seems to me that what I've heard is a decision was never made by full council, so we can disregard the the last vote. And what we really need to do is propose a motion that this item goes to a full council meeting within a week. So I support uh councillor Roszewski.
That's not, that's not, that's not quite what the councillor said, but what I, what I would.
That's what I heard in discussion of the rules that councillor Green. That's what I sort of heard in the discussion of the various rules that can be applied or not be applied. And one of them was that this decision should have gone to a full council meeting and it never did. So we now just take the whole thing, we ignore what happened and we take it to a full council meeting. And in doing that, we 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 seem to be doing appropriate due process. That's, that's the way I heard things.
I understand what you're saying, councillor Wing, but that's not what councillor Roszewski proposed. What what I will do though is propose from the chair and ask for somebody to second that this council notes the decision of the Financial General Purposes Committee and agrees to to arrange a a council meeting given the statutory three days' notice to to discuss a recommendation from the Financial General Purposes Committee. I'm not prepared to go through another Financial and General Purposes Committee and then on to council. This can now, in my opinion, go directly to council. So that's what I'm proposing.
I'll second that, Chair, councillor Albert.
Albarn has seconded that.
Just one comment, please, Chair. It's councillor Piper, sorry to be a pain in the backside, but it's what I live for. Um, there has never been a resolution brought, a resolution brought to council on this matter. So any full council meeting that is called to discuss this needs to be a clean break from everything else that has gone before because the F and G P did not recommend to council that they didn't purchase the land. They didn't recommend to council they did purchase it. They made a final decision not to do it. So in that sense, any council meeting to discuss this must be a fresh start with a clean slate. Either that or it goes through F and G P.
My proposed resolution just says that the council notes the decision of the Financial General Purposes Committee, but then moves on to give due notice of a full council meeting to discuss the issue.
Yes, I beg your pardon, Chairman. Yeah.
So, if nobody else wishes to speak, I'll ask for anybody to raise their hand or tell me if they disagree with that resolution. No? And I assume that's carried. Thank you very much. Uh I'll ask the clerk to arrange uh a council meeting at the best possible time, given that we must give three days' notice.
It'd have to be, I'm sorry, hang on. Where are we? It would have to be Monday, you're the earliest. Will that be okay?
That's okay by me. Is that okay by or not okay by anybody else? I hear nobody.
I'm in, I'm in a land trust meeting from half six. So I could start that one and then come to this one.
I can't put in my calendar at this point.
Thank you, uh councillor Wing. So that's what we'll do then.
At the same time or do you want it in the afternoon?
Oh, I think it's best at the same.
Okay, seven P M.
Be my calendar.
Seven P M on Monday. I think that's the first, isn't it?
Councillor Hetherington. Can't hear you, you're muted.
Sorry, just to say, you know, it's impossible for me to attend anything during the day, which I have, yeah, so it's going to be in the evening, good.
Let's, let's keep it at our normal time.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, okay, seven P M Monday.
Thank you very much, everybody.